All right, like calling off for our committee of the whole meeting for Monday, February 19th, 2024 order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gaffino.
Here.
Trustee Christensen.
Yeah.
Trustee Curtis. Trustee Gaitley.
Here.
Trustee Lowry.
Here.
Trustee Nedvence.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
All right, thank you. Also welcome through three scouts here. I saw you in the back. Welcome. You like to say anything or? Nope. Okay. Sounds good. All right, the audience comments other than on the warehouse. Anybody else speak? All right, trustee comment? All right, item one, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one today is a tip facade grant request. It's for 108 John Street, and Nathan is going to walk us through. This is part of our tip facade rebate program.
Thank you. So the the tip side grant program offers reimbursement of up to 50% of the cost of improvements for storefronts and building facades and site enhancements up to a cost of $20,000. The owner of 108 John Street, which is that building right there, has requested funding for a new black awning over the front entrance of the building. And I guess in 2018, the board awarded a grant for the similar awnings on a building next door. So this would be kind of continuing that side theme down down the street, the next building. So 108 John Street is requesting, there's kind of a rendering of it, $2,837.50 for that awning. They did go through the process and received quotes or from two different contractors. The lowest bid was for $5,675. So they're asking for half of that, which is the 2,837.
I don't have a problem.
I think it's good.
I'm for it. It'll make it look nice and uniform. I think it'll look nice.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. Yep. All good. Thank you. All right, item two, Steve.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is petition 2401. It's for the warehouse building at 302 Mitchell Road. This is a planned unit development. Nathan's going to start off with a presentation to walk us through the planning unit development request.
Okay, so this is for the site at 302 Mitchell Road. The petitioner is Prologis. It's here tonight. The petition is for a new warehouse building to go next to the existing warehouse at 300. The new building would be 439,380 square feet and beyond lot three, which is approximately 24 acres. The property was originally annexed in 1987 and zoned for industrial uses. In 2007, Liberty had the plat approved, which created the three lots as well as the outlots for the stormwater detention creek. Lots two and three were mass graded at that time in 2008. However, due to the recession, no building was done at that time. The building at 300 Mitchell, that one there, was completed in 2015. The balance of the site, including lot one to the south, was mass rated with utilities put in in 2017. Since the time that the lots were planted, village code has changed now, and we do require a PUD for any development over two acres. So obviously, this would fall into that category. So Prologis is here to get approval for the site at 302. The site at 400 came in and got approval last year in 2023. So they'd be getting approval for a special use permit for a planned unit development as well as site plan approval. For a new building, that's kind of a mirror image, a few minor changes, but kind of a mirror image of the existing building. The project went to the planning commission at the last planning commission meeting. Many residents spoke at that meeting. Comments generally were about light and noise, noise from the trucks, idling and beeping, backup noise, that sort of thing. So since the the planning commission meeting, taking into account that information from the public hearing, staff has proposed a list of conditions for the PUD, which are in your packet. The first couple really get to those things that came up at the planning commission. So number one is to maintain the landscape screening along the north and replace, you know, anything that's missing or dead. Number two, follow the village's lighting ordinance and additionally limit the pole height on the northern drive aisle to 20 feet. The current poles on the existing building are 30 feet tall, and lots of the the residents in the testimony said that poles are actually taller than the trees and they can obviously see the light then. So limiting the pole height to 20 feet. Number three, obviously have to follow our our performance standards, but specifically keeping the north drive aisle free and clear. So no truck parking, stacking, idling, those sorts of things on the northern drive aisle. Number four, you know, there's a general thing for for security fences, but then adding some fencing on the northern ends of the truck ports to help screen the sound. And Prologis has a slide they'll show you in a bit. Then the rest of the the conditions are kind of more of our our basic, you know, standard ones that you see in most BUDs. No outside storage, screening of dumpsters, screening of mechanical equipment, you know, separate permits for guardhouses and things like that. But the the first four are really the ones that got to the items that were brought up at the planning commission meeting. Prologis has a couple of slides they'd like to present to you, and then we can open it up.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Kelsey Perrin, and I am a vice president of Capital Deployment here in Chicago for Prologis. So we work on all new new investments for the company. You can go to the next slide, Nathan. Thank you. So just some quick background, which I recognize some of you from last year, so you probably heard this. But in Chicago, we have about 83 million square feet of of product within our portfolio, 14 million of which is in this particular corridor. So we have a really big holdings within this corridor. And you can see the number of buildings up here as well. One thing that we don't show on this slide that I think is important in this regard is we also have a staff of, call it 60-ish people that are anywhere from roles like investments to property management to leasing, things like that within Chicago that help manage the portfolio. So we do have people on the ground here on a day-to-day basis who are helping us manage anything that goes on at these properties, which which we feel like is very important and, you know, kind of sets us apart from from others who may just be building and then selling out to someone else. So very big staff here that helps us a lot with the the day-to-day operations of the portfolio. And then this is just showing some of our holdings within this particular corridor here, as well as you can see the site. Nathan showed this already on on the site plan, same site plan here that he showed. One thing I will point out that we did change on this site plan, we didn't build the first building, that was Liberty. But one thing we did adjust on this particular site plan, that's kind of hard to see, but we added bump outs in each of the corners of the building, which helps just add that extra screening to what's happening, the activity that's happening in the truck court and particularly in those docking areas. But other than that, it's a it's a very similar site plan building to to what was built just to the east at 300 Mitchell. So this is showing the landscaping plan. And as Nathan mentioned, we added some fencing to the trailer parking areas, the eight-foot fencing there to screen even more of the truck court and the activity of what's going on in the truck court to help with more of the privacy, the noise, things like that. And then on the next slide, we just have a representative example of what that fencing has looked like or what we've used at other developments of ours that we've done. And this particular fencing here or that that we are looking at using has better sound mitigation aspects to it. So that's something too that we're thinking about as we're going in and selecting the fencing that we're ultimately using. And as Nathan mentioned, this would be solid fencing versus anything that would go along the perimeter is the the black decorative fencing that's required for the for the PUD. And then here's a just a rendering of the building or what we would anticipate the building ultimately looking looking like or close to looking like. Going some elevations, just again, as kind of representative conceptual examples of of what the building would look like. And then just reiterating, we fall into the ORI zoning. This is planned to be an industrial development, and we look forward to to working on this and hopefully having a great project here for you all. It's everything.
I'll open it up to any questions.
Do you know, I have a question. Do you know what you're going to put there? Who's come in there?
We don't yet. No. We've had we've had conversations with a number of users, but all fairly preliminary at this point.
The one picture you had of the landscape there at the trees, is that in addition to what's there or is that just showing what's there already in that north end?
That would be what we're adding.
You're adding all that?
Some of the stuff right on that property line is already in and grown grown up.
Yeah.
All the stuff, you know, the the center part of the site hasn't been built yet. So all the stuff in the corners here.
Right. But I mean, what they're what they're showing there is already there on that top going across the top? Is that what you're saying?
Some of it. I mean, there are some holes that need to be filled in.
Yeah, but but they're not adding all that.
Correct.
This is along Mitchell Road here, right at the top that you're pointing to.
Oh, the tops to the north, right?
Let me go back. So the the top along here is the
The north side.
Side that faces the residence.
Right. That's the north side.
And the nice part about that is a lot of that was planted, you know, back 15 years ago, and those trees are getting mature now and getting much larger. So we actually want to preserve that as much and make sure it doesn't get hurt during construction because you don't want to start over with smaller trees.
What do what do the residents, have you screened any of the residents that are right next to that? What their opinion is? You said many of them showed up at the planning meeting.
Yeah, so most of the concerns were about, like I said, light and sound. So truck idling noise, truck beeping noise. And then, you know, lights on the building, lights on the on the poles. And I know some of the residents are here tonight as well. So I don't know if you want to, you want to open it up?
Yeah, yeah, we can. All right, thank you. Okay, the Pierce family, you want to come up first? Thank you. Just state your name and address.
My name is Maxine Pierce.
Doug Pierce.
We live at 724 Thompson Avenue in North Aurora. So the back of our yard is located next to the current warehouses' north entrance and the west corner of the warehouse, where the semi trucks enter the yard, the warehouse yard. With the proposal of the new warehouse to be built, we will be located near the new building's northeast entrance. So activity from both warehouses will be a huge nuisance and will cause an impairment in the use of our property and will definitely affect our quality of life as well as the market value of our home. A warehouse should not be built as there currently are no effective nuisance measures in place to protect the residents from the nuisances and impairments involved with having the building located so near to the homes. I wasn't aware of a fence being put up. I do question eight feet, though. I think it needs to be taller. Currently, the lights just shine right into our windows, goes right through the window treatments. And of course, noise just carries. It's not just going to stop at eight feet. It's going to carry over. I think I am thrilled that you said fence. And it will be all the way down, right? Not just starting at the new part, all the way from Mitchell.
So the proposed fence was just for screening the truck court to get at the noise. So it's on the northern ends of the truck court. It's it's on the northern ends of the truck court.
So it's not at our house then?
It's for the it was meant for the noise to block the noise out of the truck court.
Is it going to be at the back of my property?
No.
Or not?
Over by the truck court.
Okay, so then, not too bad. Okay, so the location of the current warehouse and the proposed unit are located too close to the homes that are located on Thompson Avenue, especially because the trucks use the north entrance. Studies have shown that there should be a distance of a fifth of a mile between the residences and the activity of a warehouse, when in fact, we really only have a few yards between our home and the current warehouse. It was mentioned at the public hearing on February 6th that the ORI property had been zoned several years ago to accommodate the warehouses. So the question I have is, if you knew you had a residential zoning and an industry zoning, how did you expect the two to be compatible? They're on one end of each spectrum. The residential zoning is quiet. Industry zoning is very noisy with that constant beeping and other activity being done with warehouses plus giving us pollution. And they can work 24/7, whereas residences prefer to have a quiet evening, maybe sleep all night and not be woke up. So at the public hearing, the planning committee gave their approval for the second warehouse to be built. Each committee member expressed their sympathy to the residents due to this activity that we have, and one member expressed that they would never buy a house in Chesterfield because of the warehouses. The committee all agreed that the warehouse should be built despite hearing the testimonies from the residents that the current warehouse impairs our lives with interrupted sleep, and a second warehouse will only increase the impairments to our lives. So it was really disappointing to realize that the planning committee just seems to have no regard for our health and welfare. The phrase heard repeatedly from the committee was that the business has a right to conduct business. I agree. Businesses should be able to conduct their business. But in order for them to do so, that means that we lose our rights. We're losing our rights to be able to sleep at night. We are losing our rights to have a peaceful evening in our backyards. Health issues will increase due to the noise pollution, truck pollution from their exhaust fumes, whether they are starting, stopping, or idling, as well as other harmful particles that are emitted in the air and entering our lungs. Back in 2021, my health declined due to the constant 24/7 activity from the first warehouse due to noise pollution. I spoke to a doctor about the effects of noise pollution on a person's health, and he agreed that noise pollution has an impact on a person's health. So he wrote this letter. He said, I saw Maxine in my clinic today. She has a heart condition. With these medical problems, getting a good quality sleep without disturbance is very important for Maxine to maintain her health. Her sleep seems to be disturbed by external noises in the middle of the night, which can be detrimental for her health. I strongly recommend the patient work with local city and municipality to minimize noise in the middle of the night during sleep hours to improve her quality of sleep and maintain her health. Thank you for your attention, Sujay Bangarulungam, MD. So noise pollution negatively affects human health in a variety of ways. Harvard Medicine Magazine mentions childhood learning delays, sleep disturbances, heart issues, hearing loss, and mental issues, to name just a few. Studies show that the backup beeping is a huge contributor to noise pollution and mental health. I know that this is a fact because the constant noise of the beeping and the truck's noise greatly affect my mental health and bring out anxiety. Noise does not know any boundaries and seeps through the windows and the walls. In an effort to reduce the noise, my husband installed window inserts that are guaranteed to reduce noise. Well, the noise still comes through loud and clear, and there are some nights I'm sure they are parked on patio because the noise is so loud. Noise carries, and it doesn't matter the decibel. If it can wake a person up out of their sleep, then it is too loud, and the warehouse business is disregarding our right to enjoy our home peaceably or to enjoying uninterrupted night's rest. For a quick example, last October at 3:00 AM, we were woke up with a horn blaring. He didn't tap the horn. He laid his hand on the horn for over two minutes. He could easily see he was next to a residential area because there is no visual deterrent with the one row of trees. Illinois statute states, no person shall emit beyond the boundaries of his property any noise that unreasonably interferes with the enjoyment of life. Section 900.102 prohibition of noise pollution, no person shall cause or allow the emission of sound beyond the boundaries of his property so as to cause noise pollution in Illinois. I feel that the planning committee and the village officials have not provided adequate and effective sound barrier solutions thereby not adhering to the state law. The village does have a landscaping and screening ordinance 14.1. It mentions that the landscaping regulations are intended to minimize the adverse impact of noise, motor vehicle headlight glare, or other artificial light intrusions by adjoining or neighboring uses. While the lights from the trucks do shine through the bedroom window as they are exiting the yard, as I mentioned earlier, the noise is not buffered, comes through the windows, the walls, and the lights from the current warehouse shines through our window treatments. Noise and lights do not acknowledge boundaries. Currently, we have the one row of trees. And from my home, the pine trees are older, which means the branches are separated. There are no lower limbs. And so there is really no noise buffer, nor is there any visual deterrent. Because of the location of my home and the lack of any barrier, I am aware of any activity that takes place in the warehouse yard. And with the addition of the second warehouse, this will only increase all this nuisance activity that I will be forced to become aware of. The warehouse lights shine in all the bedroom windows on our street. So back in 2021, I was told the lights were put up according to the recommendations. Well, whoever made these recommendations doesn't live on that street, or they would know the recommendations are not adequate. Their recommendations are adequate for a warehouse that is not located next to a neighborhood. But for warehouses located within a few yards from the houses, adjustments and amendments to the industrial zoning ordinance needs to be made so the warehouse and the neighborhood can share this section of the village. Hours need to be limited to conform more with the typical business hours and days, such as Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM through 6:00 PM. These hours would not have as large of an impact on our health, our quality of life, and our rights as a citizen. As it stands, the zoning allows a warehouse to operate 24/7. Therefore, we're being robbed of a peaceful quality life and the ability to sleep uninterrupted. Lack of sleep affects our ability to be productive the next day. I also experienced this back in 2021, when Dart was working constantly 24/7 with their noise. We were probably getting about three and a half hours sleep a night. So after getting such little sleep, a person has to wake up and go to work anyway. So plus doing their drive to and from work, being sleep deprived, I was not productive at work. And I was also at risk to myself and others with my sleep deprived driving. Your website reads that the village wants to be recognized for its safe and peaceful neighborhoods. With the addition of a second warehouse and its ability to operate 24/7, our neighborhood will definitely not be peaceful, and we will be sleep deprived and unable to enjoy a quality of life. The planning committee and the village officials had to know the issues would arise from having two completely different zones abutting each other. These warehouses are invasive to the homeowners, not only on Thompson Street, but on the surrounding streets as well. The buildings and the road are simply too close to the houses. The noise and activity of the trucks and the warehouse workers definitely create noise pollution and interferes with our enjoyment of life during the evening, nighttime, and early morning hours. The trucks mainly use the north entrance, which is next to the houses. There is also a south entrance, but the south entrance limits entering and exiting. It would be advantageous to the warehouses to have the south entrance redone to create an effective entrance rather than the limiting one that it currently has. Right now, we have several trees marked with orange ribbons. I assume this is that trees are going to be cut down for the construction of the building. With the removal of trees, this now leaves the area wide open during the construction phase. Construction workers start very early and are able to work seven days a week. The constant noise from the machinery and backup beeping is very draining on a person's physical and mental health. The construction will be a nuisance to the residents without proper sound barriers installed. Landscaping is not the answer for an effective sound barrier because it requires about 15 years for the landscape to mature. And landscaping is only partially effective, which we know to be true because we currently live near the first warehouse with one row of trees. The sound, noise, lights, and other nuisances come through with nothing to stop it. I did read a report about a 28-foot-tall PVC sound wall with insulation of four inches of wool was proven to be effective to mitigate noises for the neighborhoods that are near warehouses. So it would be very nice if an effective sound barrier fence would be put up to mitigate these noise. This would be one step in showing the constituents of Chesterfield that their welfare and quality of living is important to the village officials. Before we close and sit down, I'd like to ask some questions. How will the village officials ensure and safeguard the residents that noise will be kept at a minimum during construction? Because if the trees are removed, there is simply nothing between Because if the trees are removed, there is simply nothing between the house and construction.
Thank you.
I'm not, I wasn't done. I was asking a question.
We're not probably going to respond to your questions, so you want to just ask your questions and then?
All right. How will the village officials plan to ensure the residents that the vibration from the trucks using the north entrance will not be detectable at any point off the lot on which the use is located? This is your ordinance 12.5 Environmental Standards, letter C. Vibrations from the trucks using the north entrance are detectable in the homes, especially in the early morning hours when one is in bed. So how will that vibration issue be enforced so it stays on their property? How will the village officials honor ordinance 5.4 General Standards for Planned Unit Development, letter D? Planned unit development shall be compatible with the purpose and intent of this ordinance and the village's comprehensive plan. A planned unit development shall not diminish the market value of surrounding properties, and it shall cause no impairment of the use of those properties. So the question is, how will the village officials honor this ordinance in ensuring that my property will have no increased impairment with the second warehouse? And the last question, as per your ordinance, a planned unit development shall not diminish the market value of surrounding properties. So how will the village ensure the residents that the market value on their homes will not be diminished as stated in the ordinance? So in closing, your constituents, look to the village officials to ensure that the residents will be able to enjoy living in North Aurora without impairments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Julie. Can you spell your name and give us your address as well?
My name is Julie Jess Remski. I live at 104 Harding Court, North Aurora. The back of my home faces the lobby of the existing building. So we not only have noise from trucks coming by and idling, but also the employees who come and go. We have issues with them kind of arriving early and hanging out in their cars and having their music going. So we hear that in our homes at 6:00 AM when they start their day. So that's also a problem for us. I know we're here primarily to talk about the new building. But I, obviously, if everyone's using the north entrance, it's still going to impact us. And I'm speaking on behalf of my neighbors who live on Thompson, who will now have a building in their backyards. I wanted to speak quickly to the noise that happens with the trucks. So three out of the last probably seven days, I've been awake between one and two hours in the middle of the night because of trucks sitting, idling, waiting. And I understand that the building opens at six, but obviously trucks are arriving early. They make it early and that's great. But then they just sit there and wait. And I don't know that they've been offered an alternate solution. I am aware that they're not supposed to be parking there or idling there or waiting there. But if the south entrance is closed and they can't park on Mitchell or Bilter, then where are they supposed to go? So I ask that of yourselves and also the builders who have several other properties. Maybe there is a lot, like a park and wait lot or something that they can go before 6:00 AM. I also think moving start time to seven would be more appropriate. But at least if we could avoid trucks coming in before six, that would be ideal for us. And I don't think that that's too much to ask. As far as the trees go, while yes, we do have a row of trees, they are not dense and probably more than half of them are not pines. So that means six months out of the year, there are no leaves, which means they're doing us no good. It is also very bright, as Maxine mentioned. I don't know if the pole lowering is also going to be taking place at the new building. But that's something that I guess is a question posed here today.
Are you talking about the first building that's already up, that one?
Yeah. And I do have photos on my phone. I don't know if I'm allowed to approach and show, but you can see not only there is the trucks parked in my backyard essentially, but also how bright it is and the lack of coverage because of the trees are not dense. Because we can sit here and talk about it and we can look at plan maps of all these trees, but I can tell you that is not what my backyard looks like. And I understand that this is another building, but I'm just concerned that the image isn't accurate representation of what's there today. So those are my, you know, primary concerns. Obviously, I want to get some sleep. I don't think it's fair for us to have to, you know, move our bedroom to the office in the front facing so that we don't have to hear it. I don't think it's fair for us to, you know, ramp up our white noise machines and buy window inserts and do all of these things when the village should be protecting us as well. That's all I have for today. I don't know if I can show the photos. I don't know if I'm able to approach or not. But I thought it would be.
At like middle of the night or I guess whatever I suppose. There's a lot of air spillage, yeah. All right, that concludes our public speakers. You guys want to start? Mark, comments? Let's go around the horn. Any comments or?
Well, I looked at the proposed changes. It looks like try to address the spillover. It's written into the proposal. It's zoned for warehouses.
Yeah, I got a few questions. So this was originally zoned in 87? Is that correct?
That's when the property was annexed.
Okay, all right.
And actually, all, everything where Chesterfield is now was zoned industrial at that point, too. In 99, Chesterfield had an amendment.
Okay, so Chesterfield was built around 2000 or so? Okay. What other types of examples of businesses, if it wasn't a warehouse, would fit the zoning? Just for, just curiosity.
So ORI zoning has, you know.
Office, right? Office research, industrial.
Offices, warehouse, factory. Even some light industrial type stuff.
Okay.
Data centers, things like that.
So whether it's a, this warehouse or another warehouse or something, it's going to be some kind of a obvious somewhat disruptive business in some way or another. Okay. As far as noises, the after hour stuff, does, does our noise ordinance not cover that or?
So none of our zoning districts, commercial, industrial, residential, have hours of operation in the zoning district.
Not, not hours of operation, but?
Like noise pollution.
Noise pollution, yes.
The noise ordinance covers at all times.
Okay.
Generally, road noise, traffic doesn't rise to the level of, but say, say the but idling, we definitely have something on idle.
Idling and the reverse alarms, stuff like that on the vehicles, I'm assuming would?
You know, the backup alarms, those required to have those. That's not a village thing. That's
But it's still a noise, I'm assuming. And I don't know if, maybe Joe, is that something that would be a noise ordinance violation?
And how the distance and obnoxious or not. Like the dark container building, idling and like that. We worked with the company.
Okay. Have any residents called in the middle of the night complaining about the noise where you can go out and measure it or anything like that? No? Okay. And then the, I guess the entrance, there's a north entrance and a south entrance. Is there not a reason why we can't, or they can't have the south entrance as the main?
So, so there are two entrances. So the north one is kind of under that, under that label, and the south one is here. You see the south one has a kind of a pork chop in it. That's because the entrance, the street intersection comes in there, and so the tapers for the turn lane start right about there. So I have asked Palau just to look at, can we remove that pork chop? But the engineers have to look to see if there was enough room to actually stripe in a left turn lane there or not. Because you're already in the taper's turn. Is that, is that filter? Or is that corporate? So you're already, you're already in the turn bay for that going the other way. So I'm not sure there's enough room to actually stripe in a left turn.
I mean, honestly, I'd like to see if, if that's an option. I'm, I'm assuming we can't do anything about that first building, limiting the traffic, but I mean, if we can somehow limit the traffic going to the north of this building, I think that's something we, we at least owe the residents that at least just car traffic. The study on it or something. That's, again, that's my opinion. And then as far as a fence, so is there a reason or why, why we don't have a fence along the north end of that entire stretch of road?
So, you know, the, the original warehouse didn't build a fence. You know, I don't know all the history there, but you know, one, one wasn't built there. So originally, they, they weren't proposing one on this. After the, the plan commission, we added that one by the truck court, the thought being to put it, you know, to line it up with the bump out of that building.
Yeah, no, I understand that. But I, I mean, that's another one. I, I wouldn't mind seeing us. I don't know if we could say mandate it, but I, I don't understand why. I mean, I, I can see putting trees there is very, I mean, very limited in what that's going to do. I did notice, I don't know, at some point, was there a lot more trees on a Nycore property back a few years back? Yep, so I was going to say, I noticed that. I was like, maybe three or four years ago, it looks like they just cleared the whole land out over there, so.
At some point, Nycore came through and cleared it right away.
So I, I mean, what, what is our limit? Eight-foot-tall fences is as high as we, we allow? Is that correct?
Generally, in, in industrial districts.
Again, I, I would be in favor in us thinking about, I mean, a 28-foot fence, I think, is a little out, a little bit much, but something more than eight feet along that entire stretch from Mitchell all the way down. Again, I don't know that we can do much with the old building. But I mean, we're here now with this new building being proposed. And that's, again, I, I'm just, I just picture this me living there. If I live there, these are things that I, like, like our residents here said, I mean, I, I don't know why a fence not being proposed there isn't just automatic, quite honestly. So I'd be in favor of something like that, a fence taller than eight feet. I know it would be a special, you know. Yes, ma'am. That would be my, my idea. But again, I don't know what we can do with an existing building right now or not. But I mean, we're here today to talk about the proposed, obviously, right now. But yeah, I mean, I wasn't on the board when that first building was put in, but I don't understand, again, why that wasn't addressed initially, quite honestly. Not that it's in the code, just.
Wasn't, wasn't part of the process when we viewed it.
Okay, well, then that's why it's not there now. So we're here now with that opportunity. So that would be something I would like to maybe see is a fence.
Yeah, part of the history of this is that the originally Liberty was going to construct to, to build on this property back in 2005 or six or seven, and then the recession hit. And they basically got their zoning done originally back then, and it, and the pads were built, but the recession hit, so nothing happened. And then when they came in with that first building, it was under our old zoning ordinance, and our old zoning, zoning ordinance didn't require a planned unit development, which would have generated discussion like this and, and would have probably led to some conditions. They came in with straight zoning. So that means that they were entitled to build on that lot as long as it conformed to all the zoning conditions that applied to an ORI lot at that time. They didn't ask for any concessions. They simply came in and built a lot that was, they were entitled to build. And that zoning code got changed in 2013 and I'm not, my memory is that part of the amendment to the, well, part of the change to the zoning code that requires a PUD for any lot over two acres had something to do with this particular, with that building. Because the village had no ability to, to kind of rein it in and to require a better buffer and to require conditions on, on that lot because it wasn't in the zoning code. So that's part of the, unfortunately, that's part of the history of this. And the reason why we're going through a PUD right now on this lot is because of the changes to the zoning code that required it.
That makes sense then. No, so, so again, my summary, I, I would, I'd like to see us somehow encourage traffic to the south to the point where maybe they don't use the north at all. And then a fence, I think, is something that just kind of common sense makes sense.
Jason?
Yeah, I agree with both of those.
Agree with both of those things, and I'd like to see just car traffic in the north entrance. It doesn't make any sense why they couldn't modify that street.
Well, my heart goes out to people that have to live next to an adverse site location like this. It, it, it's something that when you're looking at a home and you're buying a property, I mean, that is, that has to be taken into consideration. You may be buying or building next to what could potentially be an industrial or commercial development. Like Mark had said, they have the right to build, they have the right to exist. But they also should be a good neighbor, in my opinion, and I'd like to see enforcement of our existing ordinances. There should be no reason why the neighbors have to deal with employees listening to loud music or trucks idling or things like that. So I'd like to make sure that we are doing our part as our village to make sure that the enforcement is being taken care of. And the other thing is, I'd like to see some enhanced landscaping. You know, at the back of this property, because I do think we should be, or they, the developers should be doing as much as they can to shield and protect our residential developments. And, and it's not just an aesthetic thing. It is a quality of life issue. Kids not being woken up in the morning for school. But then on the other hand, too, as a resident, you know, don't, don't be afraid to take it into your own hands, too, and put up the fence or put some trees in, because I do think that at some point, if you don't like looking at the back of a truck, then you know, there's things that, that you can do as well. So I, I'd like to just see a little bit more from the village on enforcement. I'd like to see a little bit more landscaping, buffering, whatever we can do to be a good neighbor and realize that, you know, unfortunately, we've got residential next to industrial. It's not going to change. It is what it is. But there are steps we can all do, work together, and, and make sure we can all be a good neighbor.
Yeah, well, I certainly have sympathy for the people that live there. I, like Todd, imagine myself living there and putting up with that. Although I did live next to a railroad track one time, and you do get used to it, but the inner, I guess the not constant noise is something that's harder to, to adjust to than others. However, I was sitting However, I was sitting here and, uh, thinking, it doesn't make any sense to me why. There isn't the south entrance instead of the north entrance, that to me would solve so many problems if that could possibly be done. Uh, the other thing that occurred to me was the building of this building doesn't seem to be. Uh, as much of an impact. Uh, on what these complaints are about as the first build. So I'm wondering if there, and I'm asking you, Kevin, is there any legal way we can impose the first building to put up some sound barriers? And encourage them to use the south entrance, that's my first question from an ideal sense.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's tough to go back, I, I don't know that we've got any authority to require, um, them to add. Fence or additional buffer. Um, and again, they built at a time, it was, the zoning ordinance, uh, the zoning ordinance was kind of old. And needed to be revamped at the time that they came in, came in, it was kind of the very end. That ordinance went back long before, um, you know, the growth really started in, in North Aurora, so it was a bit outdated, which is why it was updated. Um, I don't, I don't think we've got authority to go back, unfortunately.
Then I turn to Chief. Uh, is there some way we can step up, uh, uh, monitoring the situation that these people complained about in terms of a noise pollution?
Well, especially the loud music, um, early in the morning, or.
Or welcome the call, let us know you're hearing something, we. Yeah, but still, at least I would have call for service and I could go speak to, or have one of my officers speak to me. And convey that, look, I've received numerous calls, um, we obviously have a problem. And address it. Dial nine-one-one because everything gets brought to you there, because everything. So even our, um, non-emergency line will be transferred to the board. Like, you know what, then just dial the non-emergency number and eventually Aurora will pick up. If that makes them feel more comfortable.
I got them, yeah, so I, I have your photos, so I can share them with the board.
Actually, track of how many complaints we're getting, call for service in the area as well.
Um, so, so we do have a, a, an idling, uh, ordinance for not idling, I, off the top of my head, I don't remember the time, there's a certain number of minutes, you're not supposed to. Um, I don't have it in front of me, so I, I don't remember what the time is, but, um, you know, it's, obviously if you're parked stuck in traffic or something, that, that's not it, but. Parked in a, you know, spot, just idling, there is a, there's a time limit in our ordinance.
A lot of the conditions that, that's set forth in this document, they're not going to be able to sit there and idle. Just made it, uh.
Right, and, and that actually becomes more important, you know, right now, the northern drive aisle is, is a dead end road.
Yeah.
Right, so trucks pull in there and sit, if there's another building, it's now also the fire lane to get back to that second building, so you. You really can't, for, for other safety reasons, you can't have vehicles parked on that lane, it's now going to be the access point for the new building. Um, so maybe increased signage, um, you know, things like that need to happen to make sure that they can't be sitting there and. Um, so that the current tenant of the existing building, um, you know, that has generated a lot of the complaints, I don't know if you want to talk to speak to your tenants, uh. But they're.
Hey, can we, uh, can we just finish?
The board here and because we're getting all these questions all over.
Finished with some of my comments either, so I don't want.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Get too far away from it, uh, as I was saying, I see the building of the second building a separate issue. Than what we're discussing in terms of noise pollution from the existing building.
Correct.
Uh, and since we're, our ordinances, I, 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 I don't know if we can do anything but, uh, and Kevin could address this, uh. Uh, go ahead with and proceed with the building of the second building, making sure that there's sound production, sound barriers between. At least their portion of the property and these residents behind them. Uh, the second thing I keep going back to, it makes no sense why the south entrance to me, uh, wouldn't be utilized, uh, it would solve, I think, all the problems. And be a little bit perhaps less expensive to fix, uh, rather than a big, long twenty-eight foot fence is.
When this, when that property was first constructed, there was no road, um, going, uh, east and west from that south entrance and there is now. So the, the reason why it was built the way it was is because there wasn't a road across the street to get. Uh, to the east and now there is, so that theoretically that south entrance could become a full entrance and an exit, you know.
Yeah, and, and then it'd be incumbent on us to encourage them, uh, to take a look at that, I think.
All right, thank you. Carolyn?
I think that I agree with. You know, what has been said and I, and I also think that Axine made a good point in the sense that if the village, at whatever point. Proved residence on one side and industrial on the other, uh, we, we have some sort of. You know, I don't know about responsibility, maybe that's too strong a word, but to try to help the residents who are there and, and. Yes, you might buy, uh, near some empty lots and you say, okay, it's, it's zone this, but I don't think you can anticipate problems that. These residents have had in terms of beeping and all of that, so, um, I think that we have an opportunity with a new building to do things better. Um, certainly for the residents and make sure that these things are taken care of because this isn't built yet. And again, entry, uh, opening up the south entrance, it does seem like that would be, that would cure a lot of the ills there, but. Uh, certainly I'd like to see us do whatever we can within the power, understand that building's already there and we have a little bit of a. Um, disadvantage in trying to do anything at this point, but I think that we should, you know, try to do everything that we can, um. But in what's been articulated already.
All right, thank you, um. I guess where I'm at, you know, I certainly, you know, understand there, I have empathy for the situation because it does, does kind of suck, you know, having the trucks and. You know, everything sounds good, I, you know, on paper, like trucks never idle and we're putting the landscape up and then things are, over time. Kind of nobody cares, you know, the developer or whoever maintains this place, you know, so I think, um, the first building. Is probably like said, out of our realm, but I mean, you mentioned dropping lights from thirty to twenty feet, I mean. I mean, we do have a light ordinance, right, spillage and all that stuff, I mean, according to our pictures, it's certainly spilling, you know, so I mean. I think that first building you should address maybe differently than this one, but, um. My, my opinion as well, fence, at least this portion of it, if that's all we can control and then, uh, use a south entrance and, you know, I really like have staff go back. You know, we don't have to make any decision on this tonight, have staff work with this company, trying to alleviate a lot of these problems, you know, um. Maybe they could come in the south and then exit the north and just get out of there instead of, you know, sitting there, maybe the employee parking area could be moved to the south, and I mean. I get it, you know, you bought a house by, you know, industrial, but like trustee Curtis said, we all got to be good neighbors, you all got, we all have to live together somehow, you know, coexist. Uh, the business and homes and things, so I think, um. I hope something can be done, Steve, is that something you can do and then, um, take some of these, some of this input and.
Yes, absolutely, and, uh.
We can put conditions on it as well, so I mean, come back again and see where things are at and.
Sure.
I think some more needs to be done.
We could sit down with our engineers on staff and, and start looking at the south entrance noise, um, one thing I would pass along to the residents, um. Ms. Pierce has done an amazing job of sending us stuff over the last couple of years, um, she was integral and, and helping us when they were parking trailers that they weren't supposed to be on site and. And, uh, previous, uh, Mike Tofu was previous community development director, worked with the, uh, tenant to get those trucks out of there. Uh, but they do have, you know, idling issues at times, and so I think the most important things is residents sometimes. Feel that they're bothering the police at night if they call nine-one-one and, and that's, that happens everywhere. Uh, what I would recommend is that they email, they can always email Nathan and say, last night I heard trucks at this time, what it at least does. Is it helps us narrow down the times that it's happening, if it's happening on a consistent basis, maybe it's happening on Wednesdays or Thursdays. Then you can actually go back to the, the building operator and tell them, I think it's the deliveries you're getting on these dates that are really the problem. And then if it got really bad, we would actually, I mean, the police do actually go out there and what they'll do is we'll sit down in a staff meeting and say. Joe, can you have an officer go there and just quickly drive through that area periodically over a period of time? One in the morning, two in the morning, whatever, see if you can hear anything. And then if you, if you hear something, mark it down and let us know if it's, uh, if you think it's egregious or not, but at least we are establishing a pattern, so.
But it also starts with their management, oh, see, you know, we have the same problem with the one by the golf course over there where they're, the trucks are going, who knows where through the community. And, um, you know, it, it's, we can't always have police there, we, you know, I, I don't know what kind of teeth we have, I think it was item four or five. Nathan, you had on your thing where management and all this stuff.
Yeah, I mean, he's on there.
Yeah.
Management of the property.
That, um. Hmm, I guess was item three, right, yeah. I mean. What is, you know, is that any teeth, I mean.
Yeah, so actually, uh, I'm going to turn to our village attorney, but the P U D conditions that you have in those base conditions. Are basically performance standards in theory, if they complete those performance standards and it's measurable.
Yeah.
It can come back.
Especially if there's no response, I guess that's my concern, because everybody sits here tonight and says, yep, no trucks idle, trees will be great, blah, 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 and then a year later. And you call somebody and they're like, ah, he's not even here today, you know, it's like, just, you know, you want. Fast action, you want, like I said, we, we want to protect our residences, we want to protect our businesses, but. There's got to be some kind of leverage or something versus just hoping they do something and, you know.
You read number three, it says onsite management shall effectively monitor and regulate the onsite truck. Trucking activities. Order of minimize any light, sound, odor emissions as well as any other performances standards as per section twelve point five of the zoning ordinance. Specifically, the truck aisle on the north side of the building shall be kept free and clear and shall have no truck parking, standing, idling or stacking.
So. That's a big ask, but yeah, uh, so. I don't know if anybody has any other thoughts, but I'd say they come back with suggestions and.
Yep, a, a difference here is that we can impose that condition as part of the P U D, which we couldn't do with that first building, so it should make a difference.
Any other questions you have?
No, the only thing I would say for the residents here tonight is that we'll go back and we'll start working, um, internally to look at some of these issues that you raised tonight. Um, but. It's not a guarantee that it'll be on the next agenda, it might take us a few more weeks to gather data. So you can always contact me, you can always contact Nathan and, and check with us, um, we post our agendas. Uh, typically Thursday, if not Friday morning, before the upcoming Monday's meetings and we meet the first and third Mondays of each month. It would come back to committee of whole, so it wouldn't go to the village board for a vote, it would go back to the committee of whole again to review those, uh.
Just like we're having right now, just a conversation. All right, thank you. All right, move on to item three, Steve?
Item three on the agenda today is a amendment to a, an existing cell tower agreement we have with AT&T, um. As you probably are aware, we have several cell tower agreements with carriers on our water towers, um, this one's an interesting one because AT&T is one of the first, so it's super long, it, it goes back, I think, all the way to the nineties. And what ends up happening is they certainly, they have these long-term agreements, um, but because of the length of time that they've been on the tower. Their rent that they pay, which goes up exponentially over time. Uh, ends up with the compounding, ends up being a little more than maybe what the market is paying for in the area, so every now and then we've had this before where we sit with a carrier who says, well, we're going to leave because. It's too expensive, we're going to go to a cheaper tower or somewhere nearby. So we start doing some research and we work with that company to try to do basically a rate adjustment. And so that's what we have in front of us tonight and Jason is going to walk us through that.
So, so Steve mentioned that AT&T approached us, um, to try to adjust their, their rent to, you know, better. Match the market of what they're paying out there, um, what they proposed was a base rent of thirty-five thousand or thirty-five hundred dollars monthly. Um, with every five years, like going up fifteen percent until, uh, two thousand fifty-eight, so thirty-five years in, in total, um. Just as a reference, what they're currently paying is that they're on a twenty-year lease set to expire in twenty thirty-seven, um, currently it's five thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars and that goes up three and a half percent every single year. Um, by a little comparison, we have three other active leases and the average of what we're receiving on those three, those leases is about thirty-two hundred, thirty-three hundred dollars, um. Each month, and those go up anywhere from three to five percent, so what they're proposing is kind of in line with what we're receiving on the other three, um. Addition, and so in addition, um, what they're asking in the, um, agreement is to add a, a permitted use section, which basically says that they, they're allowed to operate on the premises, so if we build a new tower. They can take down their equipment from the old tower, put it on the new ta, water tower, um, they're asking basically, uh, for us to provide them two hundred and seventy days notice before we demolish the old tower so that they have. On proper notice to, to move their equipment onto the new tower if they want to. And then finally, what they're asking for is an, is to suspend the optional termination, um, in the current lease. AT&T can give us ninety days notice and basically just end the lease, they take their equipment down, they move on, they stop paying us rent, so in this new one, they're guaranteeing us a ten-year, uh. Basically suspension of that optional termination, so they'll be here for ten years, um, based on one, what they're proposing, that would be four hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars we would receive over those first ten years. Then after that, we'd go back to the optional termination to where they would have ninety-day notice, um, if they want, um, to, to leave us. So assuming no cancellations, um, if we were just to go with the current lease. Until twenty thirty-seven, that'd be a little over one point two million dollars we would receive, um, under the new lease, again, assuming no cancellations. Um, they'd go to twenty fifty-eight and we'd receive just over two point three million dollars, um, but again, after the ten years, it's kind of up in the air if they want to come back to us and, and try to renegotiate and try to get a, a new market price if, if. That doesn't match what they're paying out there, um, in the market, so what we're looking for is, um, just feedback on this new, uh. Lease proposal, and just for reference, the money that we receive for this lease goes into our water fund, so that helps pay for our water capital, our water operations, so. You know, this is money that's, or antennas that are on the water tower, so basically we put that right back in, into our water fund to help, you know, kind of pay the, uh, stuff and keep the rates down if we can.
Why would we, uh, why would we do that? Is it some advantage for us to do that, did you say?
Well, I mean, we would do that to maybe, you know, to, if they were to say like Steve mentioned, if they thought it was too expensive, you know, given the, the termination, uh, they have in their thing, they could basically just say. We're going to move on, we're going to find a new tower with somebody else and, and try to find something that you could pay them a little less and just take their equipment and, and go, so. You know, we're trying to just help them out with, with matching it to what it, the market is, and as I mentioned, it kind of. It lines up with what we're receiving from the other cell tower companies, um, for, so, you know, we're just looking to then kind of reset things, um, to where the current market is and then lock in the ten years to make sure that, you know, we're receiving that money over the first ten years.
Is it your opinion that they would probably, if it wasn't, um, amended, that they would probably take their equipment and go to, uh, somewhere else?
I can answer that, the answer to that is, I mean, it's obviously unknown, um, they came to us, this is taking a long time, it takes a long time to negotiate with cell companies. And when we look at this and you say to yourself, okay. Can they leave right now? Yes, they can leave right now, and will they leave right now? Well, we said chances are they're not going to pull their equipment off right away, it's expensive to actually relocate anybody else, anywhere else. But it gives us time to look at and you say, now they can leave at any time if they do find that location nearby in the market and quite frankly, with technology. We have no way of knowing exactly what height they need or, or whatnot in the area, or if there's, maybe it doesn't have to be a hundred and fifty feet in the air, maybe they can get by with a hundred feet somewhere else in a neighboring community. But when you look at that, this is the first agreement that we have a ten-year guarantee where they can't leave, usually it's only a five-year first agreement, so.
Currently, they're paying twenty-five hundred dollars more than any other cell tower, uh, or equipment in the village, they're twenty-five hundred dollars more per month.
And the reason.
Than the other ones.
And the reason for that, again, the way our contracts work with, with cell towers are, when they start, they get a base rent that's put into the agreement and then what happens is they pay an additional amount of money depending on how many antennas. So every time where you see like it says fourth amendment, sometimes that's because a twenty-year agreement has been, um, is up and it's being re-upped. Sometimes it's because they start with three antennas and then they amend it to put more antennas up. Um, so each time they put more antennas, the cost goes up as well, at some point, what you end up having is if this contract, if I remember correctly, I think goes back to nineteen ninety-eight. If you're at three, it used to be, I think, four percent, when the market was paying four percent, they started to get so out of whack with the other, um, cell companies that it does become. Apples and oranges when they're, when we're paying, you know, we're charging them five thousand dollars for rent and they're showing us rents in the area of twenty-five hundred. And now you have to look at that cost benefit for them and say, okay, there is a chance they might leave, they basically told us that we would go on a list of undesirable locations is what they were indicating.
What's the? Let's see.
And you have guaranteed income for the that time for at least ten years.
And it's a service to any of our residents that have AT&amp;T? Because if they left, then.
Is there a yearly increase, though, if we moved them down to thirty two or thirty three hundred dollars per month? Is there any type of increase or that would stay at that level for the next ten year?
Every every, so every five years, it would go up fifteen percent, so it would be the same thirty five hundred for the first five years. And then a fifteen percent increase, and then it'd be that same amount for five years, and then fifteen percent, and that so. So it'd be the same for every five year increment.
You know, I was telling Jason before the meeting that um. Mike told that a nice job putting this chart together. And one of the things you look at is anticipated total lease value. It's it's unusual, we don't do, we typically don't have contracts that every five years you get a large increase lump sum. And as opposed to annual increases. But what's interesting, if you look at the remaining term and they're saying, you know, it 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 does add up, it's one point two million dollars. Where this one here, you're saying the proposed lease, because it's so long, it's two point three, those numbers, they they tell a story, but at the same time, there's no guarantee. Where, you know, we can get one point two, but they could also leave tomorrow and get zero, whereas this one, at least you know you're getting the ten years guaranteed up.
Right. Exactly.
We would. You could say we would have guaranteed of one fifteen percent increase because the next five years, they could, they could then go to the ninety day termination. But we would still do the fifteen percent after that second five years. I mean, I'm, I think that that seems reasonable.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yes.
All right, that ends uh. Discussion. Wish you a journ.
Wish you a journ.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Suppose the same, all right, good night.